They will have a food booth there. It's typically brats and chips and pop. It, um, if you get there at six either night, you'll be a little bit early. I'll put you to work, but you know, it'll be good. And then we also have the gobbler cards out for football. So if you need a gobbler card, find your local varsity player. They're $20 again this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a sign up sheet for people to sign in if they would like. My name's Mary Ali and I'm the administrative assistant here. And I started my position seven and a half years ago here. And Aiken, I want to say, even though I'm a Crosby girl, I have made you my family and I have enjoyed meeting many, many people here. And I've have truly enjoyed working with most of you board members. I have worked through four superintendents. Bernie Novak, Brad Kelvington, Dr. Rick, and currently Mr. Stifter. All of them are qualified, wonderful people. And I have a question for you. Have you ever thought about why we have been through so many superintendents here? I sure have. I wonder if there will ever be a superintendent that you will allow to be successful here. That you would allow them to do their job where you do your job and let them do their job. It's, uh, it's been a really long seven and a half years here. I want to talk about roles and responsibilities. Mr. Ryan sent me an email about my roles and responsibilities after the last board meeting. That my only job here at the meetings is to take notes and not interact with this board. First of all. Excuse me? Okay. It's my turn to comment and not yours, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan is not my supervisor. He has no jurisdiction over disciplinary matters on me. I have always kept this board organized and on top of things and I always took pride in that. I have enjoyed working with this board. I've been very honored to have that job. Mr. Ryan does not appreciate having someone tell him what to do. There is an open meeting law. It is the law. Minnesota Statute is 13D. This law states that you have to post on the agenda when a board member is not able to attend in person, but wants to attend at a different location via Google. The address of the residence needs to be posted on the agenda and the agenda has to be posted on the door of the room that the board member is attending the meeting at. This allows anyone in the, in the vicinity to attend the meetings. Mr. Ryan demands to attend by phone in a car and expects to participate in the meetings. In this statute, you have to be seen and heard to participate. Mr. Ryan did not like the information that I gave him and he continues to violate the open meeting law. The roles and responsibilities of the board are clearly defined in policy. I encourage you all to reread them. The ripple effect of this board sets the tone for the administration, staff, and students. Because of a couple of board members' actions, we have a hostile work environment here. It has made all of our jobs harder, creating more work than ever than we have experienced. It's, it seems to me that Mr. Ryan thinks it's okay to belittle the superintendent, calling him names, telling him he's not a leader for Aiken Public Schools. He piles on the requests multiple daily. He has sent harassing emails to myself and other members, staff members in our facility, and he texts to many of our staff to their personal phones after board meetings. The last one I received from him was the last drop for me. This behavior is not okay. There is a code of ethics for this board and you have overstepped them in so many ways. Now we have students running around sporting events with Trump flags on their backs. Causing destruction on our, uh, we have kids causing destruction on our sporting fields. Bullying kids in the school and being disrespectful to staff because they see that that's okay. And everything starts at the top. I asked this board to stop this insanity because that's what it is. It just keeps happening. At the board meeting at the snowmobile club, Jennifer Cummings asked for a time in the meeting where people can ask questions and bring their concerns. She stated they had so many people wanting this. Number one, I have not seen these people come forward at all. It's always the same people. Number two, I have yet to see a meeting where there are concerns and questions brought to this board. All it has been is political articles and YouTube videos. I know for me, that is a waste of time for everyone here. Anybody that has a question or concern, please do the right thing and call Mr. Stifter and talk to him. He's very easy to talk to. Come and see him. He is ready and willing to meet you and visit you with you about any concerns you have. He's fair and he is educated. My suggestion to this board is to stop the comments section temporarily until you can get some work done. It is a distraction and is time consuming. So far, nothing good has come of it for this board. I urge this board to accomplish something. Jeremy Johnson brought up that it has been six years since we had a strategic plan addressed and accomplished here. And I know that because I have worked through all this. Finally, last month, we got it started. We got maybe two sentences accomplished in our time. The board can do better. It took four months to agree on a number of people to work on the curriculum committee. Four months. I get emails daily from the volunteers asking when this will get started. This is all on you, the board. Not the superintendent. You have stagnated process in the school for years. It is uninspiring to work here anymore. The most inspiring meeting I have seen here was when JLG came with the blueprints for our new school and watching you all work together on it, to see it, to feel it, to put everything together. To me, that was so inspiring to watch this board do. Now this board has become a political platform for the radicals. Thanks to Mr. Ryan and Mr. Johnson. Politics do not belie- belong in this school. Get off your platforms and do what your constituents asked you to do. Work. Move the school forward. Mr. Stifter progressed the school through COVID-19. He passed a levy, the first one in 50 years in the school district, and that is more than you have done in six years. We are losing staff and the hiring process is getting harder and harder. Who would want to work here? Anyone that has watched a streamed board meeting would be nuts to want to work here. When I had, someone approached me about a new job recently, I didn't think twice about it. The hardest part was having to tell Mr. Stifter because I knew what this would do to him. And I tr- truly trust and appreciate him. The stress levels are something that no one should have to endure in this workplace. I will bet you, in five years, this board will be stuck in the same place. That is not the fault of the superintendent. That is on this board. Keep doing what you're doing and you'll get exactly what you've been getting. That's the definition of insanity. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
I just want to point out, Jennifer Cummings, again, that it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at a public board meeting. That is all fact. That is not slander. No, that is the truth. I have, I have emails and texts to prove it.
Okay, let's go on.
That, that's, that's what I wanted to say and I have not done that. I have not attacked anyone on this board. I've brought information to the board. And I just want to say it sounds, um, in encouraging, uh, the board to stop the public comment section, it sounds suspiciously like you want to silence voices of dissent and ones who have concerns. That is your opinion. Yes, it is.
That's how it works in a, in a public meeting like this.
Okay, we're going to move on to scheduled presentations. I don't have any listed. We'll move on to old business. We have, uh, Policies 304, Superintendent Contract Duties and Evaluation. Policy 305, Policy Implementation. And Policy 306, Administrator Code of Ethics. I believe these are second readings.
Do you need something on that?
Need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion. We're going to approve them if they're.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second.
Kevin, second. Any discussion on those policies?
Yeah, just a question because everybody read the, uh, Code of Ethics or the Administrator early. That's all.
More discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Next, we have, uh, the Consent Agenda, which would be 8A1 through 8A13. Is there anything anybody would like, uh, removed or something clarified on that?
I'm all approved.
Okay, we have motion to approve. Second?
Oh, second.
Kevin, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I believe Mary's resignation was in there. I would just like to offer a thank you to you, Mary. You have worked very hard for this board and we appreciate everything that you have done. As a new board member coming in, you were a lifeline and I really appreciated you being there. So thank you.
I second that.
Okay. Move on. 8B. Uh, the Renewal of the Minnesota State High School League Membership.
This is an annual resolution we approve in order for us to participate in Minnesota State High School, Minnesota State High School League events. It's an annual resolution. I tried to check today to see, remember two years ago, the high school raised rates coming out of COVID. They haven't set their rates yet. The feeling is, is that the per pupil rate will probably come down because they're in a little bit better spot. But that's not official yet. So we ask, we're, I'm asking to approve the resolution to be a part of the high school league for all our high school league sports and activities.
So we don't know what it's going to be yet?
It won't be more than last year, is what I was told. It's not going to, it's not going to increase. I'll approve because we, we got scores, we got to be part of them.
I'll second it.
Motion, second for the High School League Membership Renewal. Any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Discuss and approve the LTFM Long Term, Facilities Maintenance 10-Year Plan. This is a yearly thing.
Heather, you ready for it?
So every year, um, in July, we need to, or by July 31st, we need to approve that 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. Um, and this obviously is a high level estimate of the two years, um, or the 10 years, the first two years. So FY '23 and FY '24 maybe are closer, but overall, it's a high level estimate. So it just goes through and the expenditures include health and safety expenditures and they also include, um, the deferred capital expenditures to, that we invest in our own facilities and buildings. So that just goes through the 10-year plan. And then we also look at the revenue side of things and there is a little bit of a change from prior years moving forward. It looks like our, because of our enrollment is part of that formula along with the age of the building. So along with a lot of our revenue, that particular revenue stream is also decreasing based on our enrollment. We are able to go into deficit in that fund as long as we have a plan to make it up in the future. So if we had a huge roof project or something like that, that put us in the deficit in that fund balance, we could go into deficit so that we had a plan to get out of that. But we're not projecting that we go into any kind of deficit at this point in time. Uh, and that's kind of just a summary of the high level 10-year plan unless there's any questions.
Questions? Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Noel, second. Any more, any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Uh, approve and adopt Community Education Contract.
It's, uh, more of a agreement, I guess, or terms and conditions of employment. This was, uh, something that hadn't been looked at for a number of years. So we just updated it, kind of matched some of the, with, with some of the opening wages with other activities and so on. But this addresses the kids coordinator, the kids club coordinator, the elementary head sports, or sports, you know, the leads of the sports. Most of our elementary coaches are volunteers. But also includes some of the adult volleyball officials and, um, and, and so on. So again, most of our community ed programs, the, the sports and the little activities are volunteer. There's usually a potential to be a lead or a head coach or a leader of the activity that gets a salary. But, um, this is just something, again, that hadn't been addressed for a number of years. So we've updated it. Again, it's more of an agreement and just what we follow. So when somebody's interested or we need somebody, we have something to go back on and say that this is what, this is what's going to be, this is what we'll pay. It does need to be, I guess, approved or adopted by the school board. So.
It does.
It does, yeah. Yeah, the motion for it.
That's Laura's spot.
Well, no, not her spot. Actually, her assistant would be on here. Some of the kids club teachers that work with kids club teachers or students. Uh, and then, and then depending on the position, some coaches or some things that could happen. And Laura's would be on a separate. She's got her own contract.
Noel, second?
Oh, second.
Kevin, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Prove the meal prices for 22, 23.
Heather may jump in here a little bit, but she did some analysis comparison to area districts. And, and our prices are going up just a little bit to, to stay competitive with that. And I believe to, uh, match what we believe are free and reduced lunch, are free with the state will allow us to charge. Our, you know, that state or federal, state will always charge for free meals. So there is a little bit of an increase, Heather, on the, can you help me out with the increases for this?
Yeah.
Oh, it is there. If you look at, um, well, everything's going to be an increase this year because the only people I paid last year were the adults. So we are going back. That's another point of this. We're going to need people to get their free and reduced, uh, forms filled out. But, uh, from two years ago, it's a 20 cent breakfast increase at Rippleside. It's a 15 cent meal increase at Rippleside. The high school will see a 20 cent breakfast increase and a 15 cent lunch increase. Last year, again, nothing happened last year. We're kind of making up for two years with these increases and, uh, we'll go in from there. But, uh, any questions, I guess?
This keeps us in line when they come in and audit us and all that.
Yeah, they ask. Each year, we're required to take a look at it at least and make sure that, um, the money that we collect based on free and reduced lunch prices doesn't subsidize the paid meals. So that's kind of where we're at.
Joel made a motion?
I'll second.
Joel, uh, Noel, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carry. Prove Iowa Resolution.
It's just a resolution we had to approve every year so I can go in and set up MBE site and make sure that people that need access to the different accounts have access to it. I gave you a big, long explanation last year. You need a board and told me you didn't need it. So that's kind of what it does. Well, Heather went for the financial aspect. Sherry does for some of the course registration. Well, Sherry gets a lot because everything she does. Cassie Connet at elementary gets some access. It's very topic specific. The principals each. They have some sites that they are parts of, where they have to data or they have to have access to for discipline and other things like that.
Julie Noll, the star recording.
Motion is your second?
I make motion.
Oh, Joel made one. Second? Kevin, second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed. Opposed? None. Motion carried. Uh, Administrative Reports. Board Member Reports. We have Committee Report. Personnel Committee.
Joel was there virtually, I think. Not sure. If you want to report, I'll be to jump in. Yeah, we just, we talked about all positions we had to fill from teaching positions, apparel positions, dishwasher, coaches, and so on. Potential for, uh, needing a bus mechanic down the road. Uh, Robert, you know, may have some other things going on. We haven't, uh, we haven't, uh, it's not, that's not set, but it was something he shared and wanted us, everybody to be aware of. But really, that was the talk. As far as updates on the hiring, we're, knock on wood, I think we're down to, um, finalizing a couple of sped positions after tonight's meeting. But it has been a, it has been a challenge. Everybody's, you know, everybody's working hard to fill their positions and we, we've gotten creative in some situations and maybe lucky in, in a couple of others. So, um, we will be looking for a couple more paras at the high school. We had a couple resignations there that, that, uh, came through. So, you know, somebody looking, you know, the apparel worker. So we got a couple hours a day, maybe dishwasher, as a dishwasher at the high school, a couple hours a day. Just worked in the cafeteria at the elementary. Somebody's looking for some very part-time stuff. That can be very rewarding. Let us know. Send them, send them to the high school office, elementary office, or the district office. So I think that's about an update on that. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
I don't remember seeing a list this long in the past. And I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the high turnover in the sped department in particular. And what is happening that we are having such high turnover?
A big part of our turnover has been Brainerd's had a big turnover. So they're hiring, they're hiring our sped teachers. There are some other things going on in the sped department. That's a high, it's a, it's a high stress position. The teachers that have left, I think they're all staying in education, staying in sped, but they're playing a different role in Brainerd than what they had here. So, um, yeah. That's a concern. I don't know if that answers your question, but I tried.
Thank you.
Okay. Policy Committee Meeting.
Yeah, there's just some first readings on a variety of policies. Policies listed there. Uh, nothing, nothing major. We did talk a little bit about the, when it was a class rank honor roll. Just for changing the recommendation is to change from 12 required ques- excuse me, 12 required credits to senior to 10. That allows some kids, if they're doing, uh, TA-ing or doing some things that maybe aren't credit, getting credit to still be in the mix for the valedictorian, subvictorian.
Okay, remember our first reading?
Yeah. There were a couple of second readings. We've already approved those earlier than me.
Which one was, wasn't it MSPU one? It was ours because they didn't have enough to affect our, I forgot. We talked about one that wasn't. It's strictly ours, not theirs. I forgot which one it was.
Uh, Discipline Suspension and Dismissal.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just, that's our policy. It'd be for, Policy 403. It's not a required MSPU one.
Okay. Anything else on the policy meeting? Not. We'll move on to Superintendent's Report.
Hey, a couple of things. The MREA Fall Conference is coming up. I think that might be what Mary has in front of you.
Everybody has.
Everybody has one. Uh, it's not coming up, but November 13th to 15th, it's at Cragan's. I've gone to this for a number of years. I was able to go last year. It is open to, uh, school districts, staff, uh, school board members. John, John Chute used to go. I think Joe has gone in the past.
I've gone once.
You've gone, okay. Um, it's a good conference. MRA does, does focus on rural education, rural, rural, rural concerns. I'd encourage you to sign up and go to that. Or at least take a look at it. Again, it's, we pay membership to MREA and, and they do a lot to promote, to promote rural education. It's, it's a good, good organization for us to be involved with. So just a little plug for that. Any questions?
Yep.
The insurance, uh, security state insurance. Heather, I met with Bob Cummings. We reviewed our insurance. We did have him look at a few other policies, a few other policy holders. And when it comes down to it, there's really very few, uh, companies in the insurance market that insure schools, insure entities that are set up like schools. If, the only way we really do better is if we changed or limited our, our insurance. Bob did share a letter I put in. It's in the board packet. You can take a look at that, kind of stating that. He also said he'd be more unwilling, the board would like for him to come and answer any questions about the insurance. But we did have him check some other options, uh, just to see if any other carriers would be able to give us a better rate. And that, you know, what he, what he found is if somebody was comparable, it was more expensive. The only way we could save money is to drop coverages and we weren't, didn't think we were willing to do that. So I think Bob did a nice job checking it out, working on it with us. So.
And how does Swin's, um, our insurance cover pretty much everything and the damage?
From the wind. Uh, we had a $10,000 deductible on that, on that stuff. So, uh, if I can jump in there, we're, uh, got a price on materials to rebuild the shed. We talked with a builder two days ago, three days ago. It was last Friday. He was going to take a look at and get back to me the cost of that. There was a football, uh, stanchion, I don't know what it's called, not, not necessarily, not necessarily sled that was damaged. We'll get that replaced. We have some fencing, softball fencing blew down. Olberg, I was going to be there this week. They might have been there today, uh, to fix that and straighten that out. On the tennis netting, um, that's ripped. I think the custodians kind of got it zip tied back down, but we're waiting from BSN to get a quote on what it would cost to replace that netting. Once we get all that, we'll turn it in. But it's going to cost, I mean, it's an estimating guessing without, we're probably $20,000 worth of damage. So we'll have a $10,000 deductible, but we'll turn the rest of it in.
How big is this building?
10 by 14. Yeah, well, I'd like to try and get it for, before football starts or before, yeah. A lot of football equipment stuff gets started in there in the fall and not a whole lot. You know, I sent the coach, football and track coaches use it. And, uh, I got a lot of, got a lot of requests when I asked, you know, what would you like to see in the shed? But, you know, we got to, we're going to try and stay within that 10 by 14 and there's things we can do within there. Yeah, that's, it, uh, you know, which, good thinking, but I think to get something there for the fall. We'll see. So the, the contractor I talked to last Friday, thought it's something he could get done. Working, he said it wouldn't take him long to get it, once he got going. So he was going to check again. We had a bit from hometown. Check with him on materials and, and get back to me with what it would cost to get something built. I really, I don't know if I, we'd have it done by football start, but it'd be, it'd be good if we could. So. Got off track there, but.
Is there a question? Okay. Strategic Plan.
Strategic Plan. We had the work session scheduled for last Thursday. It turned out, I think we're only going to have a couple of board members that could make it. So we really need to, uh, take a look at what's another time more convenient. We planned last, you know, last week, we planned that, I think in May probably already. I mean, it was June, but it was just a long ways out. So I know summers get busy. We had, we had a start on a plan, I think it was in April. What's a, what's a date we would work? What's a, what's a date we would work to try and get the board or most of the board? Or you want me to throw, throw out some dates and email you? What are we gonna? That's the best thing, I think.
Not Wednesdays.
Not Wednesdays? And it didn't seem like Thursdays. We're very good either.
Yeah, I would say.
Try, should we try and stick to a Monday if possible? Does that seem to be the best date for everybody or?
I'm going from next the second through the next week, August. Not gone, but I got, I teach gun training, I got three other things in southern Minnesota.
Monday doesn't work for you or just anything?
During the day?
Well, early we can meet anytime.
Cause I, during the day, I, I got court things.
We do the six thirty meetings if that works too.
Yeah, we do.
That would be better, yeah. I can do that.
Do we look at next Monday? Is that? Oh, next Monday, I'm in the cities at an M B E conference with the principals. Yeah, uh I don't know if I'll be back by six thirty.
Uh next Monday won't work for me.
How about Monday the eighth?
Eighth I got open.
That would be fine.
Should we plan Monday the eighth?
Monday the what?
Monday, August eighth. Six thirty.
What time?
Six thirty work?
I'm, I'm gonna be gone that whole week, or in the, in the evenings.
Do I look for another date or go without? Sorry, go without Kevin.
We need, we need Kevin.
Can you join remotely?
He'll be training.
No, he's got, he's got gun training.
That's our first day of gun training, I can't miss that.
The next Monday you're doing that too?
Yeah, Monday's our first night.
Okay, but I mean the following week?
We have a work.
Fifteenth, what is next Monday again?
The eighth?
Yeah, I'll be around the evening.
You will be around the eighth?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a work session on the calendar for August twenty ninth.
Have one. Yeah, we do. We wanna meet the tenth?
Tenth.
Uh excuse me, the eighth, the eighth, the eighth. The eighth, I'm sorry.
The regular meeting, fifteenth, right?
Yes.
Yep. Six thirty, Monday the eighth? Six thirty, here? Okay. We'll pick up where we left off. Any other questions on that?
Here, I suppose.
Yeah. No, no. That was in the consent agenda. I just wanted to explain. It was asked at last night. Okay, curriculum committee. We need to get a, get our crew together to take a look. It was decided to do uh, do a five community members. It'd be wise, I think, to have the board members. And if I look at our, uh who's on the curriculum committee and on the continuous improvement, that would include Jeremy, Joe and Dawn from the board. And then myself, Lisa, Andy and, and probably Kathy Christie, she works with curriculum as well. I think it'd be good for us as a team to get together and, and talk through how we're, you know, how we're going to get five, how we're gonna add the five community members or how that's gonna look, how that's gonna work. So we get a process in place and kind of set some ground rules or norms of what, uh, of what, uh, of what we'll be doing and what needs to get done uh once we start meeting at curriculum and, and moving with the curriculum planning. So any thoughts on that or what, and what's uh, uh Joe and Dawn, it would be a good day. And Jeremy's not here, not meaning to exclude him, but a good day to get together with, with, with this team. That one's good, I bet.
I may have to meet virtually, but it doesn't matter. Evening, the evening, obviously.
Dawn, you have a?
You know, it's, it's hit or miss. So it just depends. I know you want to get going and you need, and we need to get going.
Work better? Well, work, that'd be work for you, right?
It doesn't matter to me.
They're gonna go back to back, but how about Thursday, the eleventh? Will give us a couple day break in between from strategic planning to the Thursday, August eleventh, six thirty?
Sure. Did you say six thirty?
What's that?
Did you say six thirty?
Yep, if that works. It'll go earlier or later if it's better for somebody.
Danny.
Sorry, Joe.
No problem. I just want to make a comment. We're talking about um curriculum and strategic plan. And on our desks here from the uh M S B A Minnesota School Board Association, quite relevant to our discussions and everything that's been going on in this country and even in our schools. The virtual summer meeting of the M S B A is gonna focus on three highlights. Leading in difficult times. Embarking on diversity, equity and inclusion journey. It's right there. It's the Minnesota School Board Association. It's gonna push it. Somebody wants to come up and explain what this is, uh I'm all ears. And then let's talk about mental health, a very legit issue. But if you need any more, if you need any more verification of what, what unions and organizations leadership is, is attempting to do here with public education, you don't need to look any further than this.
So what are you opposed to, diversity, equity or inclusion?
I'm, I'm opposed to them implying that we are not diverse, that we do not treat people equitably and that we, we do, that we exclude people.
I don't think this implies that.
They don't imply that.
I don't think this implies that. It says embarking on the diversity, equity and inclusion journey.
So we haven't.
It's not telling you that you're not doing it. You don't know what any of the content is here.
But if we're doing it, then why, why the focus on this?
Joe, you're freaking out about buzzwords.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not freaking out about buzzwords because I do know what's going on.
So what part of this do you, are you opposed to? The diversity part, the equity part, the inclusion part? What part of are you, are you opposed to?
None of it.
Well, what's the problem then?
Absolutely none of it because we don't, we don't do that in our school.
Well, they're not telling you, you have to do this.
Why are they focusing on this stuff? What's, what's the point?
You don't have to sign up and do this.
Where are we failing?
Are we failing?
What we must be, they put this as a, they put this as a lead topic. I'm just asking.
Nobody said we're failing.
Where are we, well, apparently we are because it's a theme of the Minnesota.
This went to every school district in the state of Minnesota.
Yeah.
If you want to participate, you participate. If you don't, don't participate. It's a free country.
I understand. Okay.
There are places that would appreciate having that.
There are.
It might not be Aiken.
Where?
I don't serve in those other districts. It's not my concern.
You don't know, but, but this is the, this is the theme of M S B A. The main focus. Come on people, let's wake up.
I think that is the problem.
People are waking up, it's not a problem. It's a good thing that they are.
Okay, let's uh, any, so the curriculum committee, you guys are gonna work your dates out?
Yep. Right now, August eleventh at six thirty.
Okay.
We'll meet back in here.
Uh anything else from you?
Oh, I do have a couple of things that I didn't have on there. Uh just more or less uh, the all-class reunion. I'm gonna give Gary Tibbetts credit. I'm gonna miss a lot of people that are really working hard on that. Lot of stuff starting and going on, starting next Thursday, August fourth through Sunday on the seventh. There's a link on the school website to get connected if you want to participate in that. Check it out. But thanks to the all-class reunion, everybody working with that. Appreciate that and getting the publicity out for that and hopefully having a wonderful event for alumni and anybody associated with the district over the years. So um changing gears really fast. We're gonna start really looking at the, the farmland and some of the facilities out there. We're gonna start getting rid of some of the old desks and, and taking those apart and getting rid of that. We need somebody to come and work with us and uh take all that junk apart and try to scrap what they can and get rid of the rest of the garbage for us. So it's not, we're not hiring, we're not hiring anybody. We're not paying our own guys, uh our own custodians, our own workers to do that. But there's also, you know, um, I don't know if they got out there, somebody's gonna check on the house. Let me know if they thought, somebody's moved houses before to see if that's a possibility of moving that house. Um they didn't get back to me, I didn't track them down, get a chance to talk to them today. There's a feed bin, somebody has expressed interest in. I think we'll probably uh get some pictures and maybe do a sealed bid through social media. The other night I just had a chance to talk a little bit about that. And then there's an old uh like loafing shed, hay, hay shed. Somebody else has said they'd interested in buying that and moving it. I don't know what that would be worth, but it'd be worth something for us not to have to. Right now, it's, we've got some stuff sitting in there that probably should've been thrown away. It just saves us money from throwing it away at the time. So I think uh, there are some things we look at. I know the milking parlor out there um is full of stainless, stainless pipes and uh the, I don't know, it's a step saver in there, what they call it. But you know, there's a, that's all there. I don't know if there's money in that. I know a couple of years ago, I had somebody inquire about that and just, I didn't, you know, didn't know. I didn't know what they're talking about at the time, but since then I've been out there. So there's some things we're gonna start doing, just um if we get rid of the house, save some heating, heating costs. If we move some of that other stuff and, and have some people take it off our hands or maybe make a few dollars. I don't, we're never, not gonna get rich on it, you know, or, but uh just so you know. We'll get some pictures, probably do some sealed bid, kind of looking through and talking about some of the best ways of doing that. So finally, uh Mary's last board meeting.
You just scheduled one for the eighth.
Oh. Yeah, work session, okay, it's last, very important. I want to thank Mary for her work. She's been right there for me, helped me through many things and unfortunately she had practice breaking in superintendents along the way. So uh thank you, Mary, for everything and uh I wish you the best.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, uh July twenty seventh, personnel committee. Uh August second, uh facilities and finance committee meeting. August tenth, policy committee meeting. August fifteenth, uh regular school board meeting here. Uh and then November thirteen, fifteenth, uh M R E A convention. Any other things? Anything else from the board? Okay, at this time, uh we entertained comments from communities. Uh is there any questions for the board? We can maybe get some answers for you or something.
Hi.
Tenille Palmer. All right, what is D E I? Terms diversity, equity and inclusion among many other positive sounding woke words are used as a cover for recruiting woke participants. The concepts are useful for the social justice perspective because they seem at first glance unambiguously positive. Also, questioning them is easily painted as bigoted or racist. It is for these reasons that diversity, equity and inclusion will be used to advance many different initiatives, particularly for recruiting new members to a given situation or site of oppression, committee, department, discipline, et cetera. In reality, terms are used to recruit people that agree with, can be convinced of or can be forced to comply with the social justice perspective. Only very rarely will participants be recruited based on actual diversity, equity and/or inclusion, but not actively support or at least not resist the social justice perspective. Think you all know what woke means, but just in case. Woke is a term given both to a worldview to the people who are in hurt, who are initiated and adhere to that worldview. The worldview is known under several pseudonyms, the critical perspective, social justice and the critical social justice perspective. It is described in section one point two below. It is an anagram of postmodernism and critical theory. The term woke is the simple past of the verb to wake and it is intended to mean awoken to the social justice worldview. This is in a book and if you all want to know about it, you can research it. This book is called Counter Woke Craft by James Lindsay and Charles Pincourt. Thanks.
Can I see that? Tenille? Can I see that?
Yes, sir.
Take a picture of it.
Of course.
I think it worked. Oh dang it.
I heard it click.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Jennifer Cummings. Um and Mr. Lindsay actually does um about a ninety minute podcast that explains the history and origins of critical race theory, social emotional learning and um wrote that book. It's very enlightening. The reason I came back up here um is for two reasons. Number one, I want to say for the record, I am not against any teachers, past, present or future. I am not against any administration member. I know you all have hard jobs and I support you in those jobs. And of course, I'm certainly not against any of the kids. What I am against is curriculum content that is designed to indoctrinate. I believe there is curriculum content coming down from above that is intended to indoctrinate children. And I have every right to say that, to come to this meeting and say that. It doesn't matter if I'm the only one who says it or if other people show up at meetings and want to say it too. There are so many people in Aiken County who feel the way that I do but cannot come forward due to their jobs or their family relationships. And so I speak for them. I'm not speaking just for myself. I wanted to share, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I lied. It was three things actually. I wanted to say for the record, uh for Ms. Ollie to come up here and say that it is Joe Ryan's or anybody else's fault, the kids are quote, running around with Trump flags, wrecking school property is slanderous and libelous and it should not be allowed at this meeting. The last thing I wanted to say. You came in the school, you would know that.
It's a very woke thing to do.
That's, that's.
Um the other thing I wanted to say is that I have two, two grandchildren who attend Saint Francis Catholic School in Brainerd. This week, I believe it was, three days ago, four days ago, the Brainerd uh school board at the recommendation of their superintendent cut off parochial schools from participating in extracurricular activities. The letter that I have is because my grandkids go there saying that it's obviously um illegal and it's not um appropriate for Christian kids, kids going to Christian schools to be banned from participating in extracurricular activities at the Brainerd School District. But that's what they're trying to do. Now I know I've come in here and talked about a teacher from California. I've taught, I've played you a recording of a student from the cities. This is Brainerd. Every time I come here, something happens that gets it closer. These kids decided, we don't like what the Brainerd schools are doing and so we're gonna send our kids to Saint Francis. What does Brainerd do? Well then, your kids don't get to be in baseball. And I am not gonna stop talking about it. I believe I've always been respectful of individuals, respectful of this board. I am here on behalf of my grandkids and the kids of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are there a motion to adjourn?
Saved.
Second.
No, Kevin? Any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thanks everybody for coming.